Everybody, getting everybody here. I just told that I will be with you. You might be. You know, can get it ready there?
Yes.
Okay. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to San Diego River Association Town Hall. I'm April Hattler. I'm a member of the board. I started in January 2023. So I'm in my second year of volunteer term. And I will introduce the other members of the board. So spray food or for the dirty teeth problem. So you know, we used to do that kind of day and we do prep. First person on the board here is the Alvar team. The board this year and the chair of ours, A P. Very keen. The members is Perry Governor, Perry going from January this year as well. The M T B is the board meeting on the A S P. Then we have Mohammed Sinin. Mohammed is going to board in 2023 at the same time. So I did. Actually, you just going for a second term. We go on a TV renewed term. Mohammed is the chair of the emergency. Then we have Paul Daniel, um, joined the board this year and is our secretary on board. Talk for our meeting minutes and end of their meeting. Then we have Rod, Rod Niv, Niv, Niv. Rod is for this year and is the chair of the committee. Then we have Joel Green. Joel is a member of the board who joined the three people of our agencies. And Joel, Chair of the Communications Committee. And we have Debbie Kaplan. Debbie is a person who joined the board in 2023, the 2020 agency. And she is the vice president and she is the chair of the committee. And then I hope everybody knows Erin. Erin is our general manager. We have Lori, who greeted everybody who came in and the fact that everyone signed in. And so I hope everybody had. And we have Christine, who organized the meeting and the valor and we were working for us. And it's the man who's the soon. So the purpose of this is to have a machine and ask questions from the membership. And so we will, um, we receive some questions in advance. So we'll go through those first, which we got a question for everybody. They were sent in to the phone email or to the office. So hopefully those, and then we can take questions from individuals here at the meeting. We're asking people to please ask a question and not make, not make speeches. Purpose of this is for people to ask their questions and we want to get a chance to, um, have a fair amount of questions. So we're gonna try to limit the amount of discussion on one thing to about five. And then at the end, we can, we can revisit some problems, but we're asking that we give a chance. So I will go, we frankly received, um, on email, we received some pretty, you know, clear after business yesterday or overnight. So some of those were probably, um, you know, not going to be, you know, given a chance to go through, but I can read the question out and let you know what our proposal is for responding. So the first question we have, we're asking everybody to give us your names so that we know that you're actually a member owner here in San Diego. First question from Eric Farmacy. He has written, I do have a question regarding the recent ballot regarding any insurance premium is new to the lawsuit. I tried to find the name of the lawsuit, but couldn't find what was regarding. I don't know any reason why the board can't state these strict and philosophy that would invalidate my attorney's privilege. Also, I would like to know the decision the board has made that could justify any lawsuit that part of the range of the thing. I have to be honest, it really puts into place in the board's decision-making skills. This is a huge deal and you have given zero transparency to those about. I don't expect people on this, you state will not increase any HOA dues, however, it does review the ver, which quotes future HOA dues and special assessment. We can do the separates. So I know for everybody, the lawsuit and the increased premium of insurance is, um, a topic that everybody would like to have more information on. The L R A was named in the lawsuit in December, 2022. It relates to flooding that happened in the storm of November, 2021. San Diego, the name in the lawsuit has a band as well as the city of Lane and the developer Seasol. The, we have very good difference. The insurance company is a top-tier insurance company and it has, um, assigned an attorney to represent on this deal. The attorney is a lawyer or something. We are not paying anything to be insured, uh, to lawyers. Very experienced, very reputable lawyers.
He does this.
Oh, sorry. Very reputable, very experienced lawyers on HOA matters and on, um, dealing with the nature of the plane. They're being provided insurance company, it's settlement in any, we could pay for buying insurance. So there is no word that they're going to have to, that we're draining on paying for the lawsuit or that we are just going to have a special assessment at the end of the lawsuit. The lawyers have, and I know there are some bold reviews to this, but the lawyer has had a very strong, uh, it's not something to think about, very strong to, uh, be very, very, uh, respectful in the, in the information that we openly discuss and provide when they are not present. And, uh, because, and they have, well, just because of worrying about client attorney privilege. And we, and because of that, we need our insurance to be above. So although you know, there's people who don't agree with that or question that, the board has made the decision that if we follow the advice of our attorney, they're very experienced in the type of case. And we feel that the consequence of not following their advice could be catastrophic. And that we will, uh, follow what they are telling us to do. I'm, I apologize for people. I understand that it is, but that's the decision that board has reached in the best of what we do as a community. So I will, I'm sure there may be more questions about coming up and, and kind of those things come along. But I'll move on to the next question. Next question comes from Stan with three thousand. Does SRA have been working with your dog on leash rule in an effort to prevent dogs from leaving themselves on owner law? So the SRA will do require that dogs be kept on leash. It is almost the same goal as the law of dog leash. Historically, for many years, the SRA has relied on the law of the human side to enforce those, um, rules that the law of the human side has a, uh, system where they will come out and find the owner to prevent their dog from leash. Obviously, we ask everybody to be considerate with their neighbors and their, in respect to both property. But we, you know, this is sort of an evil issue of dog on leash, off leash. Some people who think their dog doesn't need to be on leash to be able to date. But there is a law and it's a part of it, dog on leash. Next question we got from Stan. What is the best spending opportunity to gather the moral of taking bounder bridge steps to the beach? The, uh, board had a meeting last week. We saw an update that a second engineer in front of him came down to do a, uh, evaluation of the stairs. In order to do that, we power washed the stairs. They could see, you know, what was underneath the law and the, um, uh, dirt and buildup of rinds over the winter. So I think that's something we thought just a bit because the men that come to look so clean and new, but they actually were visiting for the purpose of doing evaluation. That evaluation, we expect a report to come in in the next couple of weeks. Uh, then we will be contacting the contractor to take a look at what that report, what work that report was required to be done and have to talk. The boundary stairs is another great, uh, topic in the community where there are people who are saying, well, spend down one of those stairs. And we thought these things, stairs are the most important. So, um, whatever the outcome is, will, uh, undoubtedly be controversial for the people who get out what they want. But we can't leave anything to this ability to help them. So the first step is to find out what the options are, find out what causes. It's not a straightforward, um, issue. It's straightforward, it's been solved a long time ago. There is, um, a lot of new regulations that apply to construction on the shoreline that they applied over the years, the values there is about. So, uh, it's not just a matter of, there's going to be new stairs and why are things so long? So we're trying to do things in a methodical, logical way to add all the information first and then we're making decisions. Next question we have is from town or also. The city of Hua Hin Golden River Hall is a great way to think forward and a yearly golden will that our association wants to aim for. With that in mind, whether our SRA board or his Golden River Hall continues to support, I recommend sharing this information with our residents on our website and within the board section. When volunteers are elected to our SRA board, they take on the responsibility of managing our community. Board members have made important decisions for our association, therefore, they can have a good track of how age for age is managed. Last year, six directors, whether appointed or elected, and definitely there is a unique type of nature involved with becoming an effective board member. What HOA board education training, education slash training, did our media appoint you to or elected directly to see? Is there a formal training package or did that one if you go? The formal training goes away and first more certification by resident, going there for more agency. So the board has, the first, first best of the setting Golden. Board has had two meetings to, uh, evaluate and analyze all the different factors some board members came up with. That exercise is, uh, been, uh, this is in progress. We collected a bunch of data on the primary education exercise. Uh, and we will be finalizing and reading out of board meetings. The work that has been done, we've been, we've been better, the board will have to assess our board meetings when we have a board meeting where we finalize the, those, uh, third, your point from four will be done in open session and voted on. And absolutely everybody will be informed of what those are. Uh, the second item, which is about training board training and, um, volunteering. We have a board training that was done a hundred years ago. I think, uh, probably a little of David Aaron had that package and updated it for 2024. And there are some new resources that we're adding to it. And when finalized, there would be, uh, a reference for everybody on the board. So that's another first that we broke that. You know, personally, I don't believe the nature or, uh, availability of board materials is a factor in people launching the board. I think that once people on the board, there will be some people who want, uh, rather material, they're going to feel comfortable about. We're going to have those materials available to people. I think that the challenge, the being challenged here in San Diego, the volunteers is, you know, it's been that a lot of people meet here to relax and enjoy, uh, in some cases, the retirement. And people feel that they, you know, kind of fine when they're not committed. They want to go away, they're part-time residents, family in other states or in a partial state that they want to visit frequently or that they want to spend. So my impression is that it's more of a time commitment. And then people view are worried that it'd be going to void, but you know, much work to do. And, um, they don't want to take that on. So my impression is that those are the things we have with putting people forward.
I'm there. You have to go to Zoom and you have to type in the number.
So I don't, I think we got the people on, they, they believe they're like the wrong people. We can hear you, we can hear you in the instructions because I'm here. Um, so yeah, we can, we have everyone who needs for now. So that is the, you know, that's it. I think it's always a challenge that we've served over twenty years. And in the twenty years I've lived here, finding people who serve on the board has been a challenge. Every year that I've been here, I've seen the email blow, you know, getting the people to consider on the board and consider the community. Uh, there's many years that, you know, for last year that we have had a state run to remember, you can see that four big, three people, um, running. So, um, I think, I think this is a challenge for, for people who need to be on the board is not something that they want to commit into in, in the way they plan to be living their life in that big time. So, uh, I don't see board meeting being a factor, but it's not, it's not available. Uh, next question is on that wood. To what point, or to what degree, what quality level have you, and transitively, Leroy, been instructed to maintain or end the parks? Has he been focused on maintaining to a visual standard? And if so, how has that been defined? And has it been left to his discretion? In either case, how has the expectation been determined whether it is an offset of this aspect of this network? So like that I've been here for twenty years and I've thought in the months of, and I've seen the, uh, common areas rain from, you know, being very pristine to being somewhat of a natural, less than a natural state. And, you know, it's sort of dependent on the G M, it depends on the board and the God. You know, the community or anything that's been, uh, so what is your, it is, uh, there's a variety of approaches to landscaping. There is no visual standard. We don't have a, um, not that this we use these six, one of these six. We have, um, uh, a staff that's responsible for the, in the green spaces and the home areas. The main and staff have all got, of course, to the, the general manager. The, in 2023, we made an effort to improve the appearance of the gate. We find it well flowers last year. We found the same issue, uh, but it's not going to be, that there will be a consistent look, but it will not be alarming enough. But, uh, every, every, every aspect looks exactly the same. There will be a common theme. I want to, and we wanted to improve, say, they don't bark, the bark and people in parties be able to see that bark is in the way, it's in the way of the nature. So we had a start on getting, um, some of the smaller areas of the night. Uh, we have heard a few questions about, you know, whether there's been bad day training. If that's the law, we don't go on the not day training, are you just that? We have hired a new name of persons who have a lot of speeding background and supported on TV. And Leroy, I think everybody should know, if they don't know Leroy, it's been the important public work that's been there for, for the city of Lane and Minnesota. And then for the city of Long Washington. And so he's very experienced in maintaining the farm areas. The workflow is Aaron. We think that we were a fantastic job to save money for this, that sort of association in so many ways that, you know, we can go into later if anybody wants to. And we, the board has both faith in, in Leroy, who's a very good dog, uh, very well. And faith in, uh, Aaron to make sure he's in a half that. I do think the, the seven common areas are a priority for the main community as well. So looking on, uh, the main racks, they can be used to join the park that they're focused on. There's a working group, uh, there's only people seeing important the community are. And, uh, so if anybody ever is sitting doing their part, it's, you know, involved enough and contact the office or contact, uh, Eddie or Laura. Because we're very interested in getting everyone's input. Uh, now I think there's another question that came, oh, there's another question that came in yesterday afternoon. That is, the question is, when will the A S U report on the landscape, the rules and the masks? This is from Ted Jackfix. When will the A S U report on the landscape of rules and masks and not be available for membership review? And their question is relating to agreeing the, the buffer between seasonal and San Diego Parkway. So unfortunately, this question just came in yesterday afternoon, I thought last night. I think it's a question we're going to be able to answer if, you know, on the spot. But to, to Ted will get back to you and you'll offer between seasonal and, um, San Diego. Way is a big, uh, issue for a lot of people, especially for people at Minneville. I was sort of involved in, aware of when the seasonal development is done or request to maintain the buffer. The goal of the same thing with wood breaks, maintaining between, um, the parkway and those developments. And, uh, so I think the Ted, all did a bunch of, um, city, a bunch of city, uh, regulations and historical emails. Uh, and I know that it is a big portion of people at Minneville. But unfortunately, with the amount of time we have, and the time we receive the question, we're not going to be able to actually answer it. But I'm not going to answer it right now, but we will come to Ted right away. I think there was another question that people did on, question came in to Peter Playo, and so I haven't been ready.
Um, I sent it to Kurt.
Uh, speak on future response for walking paths. This is coming to a halt.
I also sent a note.
I don't, I don't know if walking path is, is walking, uh, it's just walking up. I don't know if it's walking up, walking up. Oh, okay.
The paths, the walking paths, it will, you know, to, for safety reasons. It's the, the gravel paths.
The gravel path all around.
Side of the street. The one hole, one that were years off, gravel line and they make it gray. So it was.
Oh, okay. So this is the, yeah, I don't, I don't know what to call it. There, there's a lot of, um, uh, there are agents that I know last couple of years is very long. It's been, it's not, it's not put in the walking path. Or when you, like, I know in my neighborhood, there's a, the gravel path, go along there and stop, there's not a house, like, they're not to put in the walking path. The very landscape is like to defer and then it's started again. So, um, I, the, the, where do we go now? Is that people need to have the option, you know, out of the walking path area, you can go and leave it around. Maybe you can start, you don't opt for walking path. So there's going to be, I get more and more worried in terms of whether, uh, the path is there. And certainly, even if, uh, we'll be moved about what's happening anymore.
Part of us required to have those paths for safety reasons.
I don't think it is because the.
City, which I said that it was necessary, then they built those doors.
No, they're not there. Okay, I, I sort of, I don't even, I didn't do a part of it. I do, all I know, and I don't even notice, I didn't notice that.
Well, they're just sort of on the sidewalk, that's all.
Yeah.
It's for the weeds.
They, they, the city, city doesn't have the apartment for us to have sidewalks, angle, walking path. They were closed, you know, if we're not openly committed to the city of Lane, would we be required to have sidewalks? Or the little working path, those walking gravel paths were voted on by each community. And there are HOAs or whatever, put them in, not helping the city of Lane require.
Okay, so for people who can hear that, or people want to, uh, add masks as, uh, just that, that, uh, his understanding, since they're not required by law. We often have to thought, take those private communities. But as far as, if you're in community, you're developing in lane, you don't have non-terrible, uh, communities. I don't actually, you know, I've had this work on, uh, there's a, there are others for all that. So I would put a lot of thought into Ted's bed, but I don't, I can't prove that most of them are. I think that the question is whether there's a moving where we are not maintaining the path that's in front of us. Um, okay. This is from Mohammed Abdullah. Sorry, I didn't get my name. We've been here now for five years. Okay, so we, we have just five years and we're going to need to start with, we've got this location, we have a wall, it's been a couple of days ago. And then we want to over year, we wrote the, the main, the main place. On the way back, we'll be scared of the ground, we're ready to prepare. After they go out, they're ready to install. After they go out, they're going to be strong. We're not staying as good as we did before, we've got to make this fight. Uh, so it's a series of that, of that, of her, or the plan to do though. Uh, to do a little bit of the worst person in our neighborhood. And that, you know, I know it's supposed to have the things to the wrong people, to be strong, they're going to, so. So I think that's there, we've kind of covered, uh, system process, engineering, uh, from them, so there is another second thing. There's first opinion roster, there's a second thing this year. Um, with this rate, I think it's what we call the rate and park or regulation, you know, these things. Uh, which is that path that runs under area, I mean, it's very long under regulation side. Um, that, that, you know, there's a, a, some very long, very thick into that uh, pathway. Um, at some point, the city can give it over to Sandy Adam. And Sandy Adam, Sandy Adam is now responsible for that pathway. Uh, there, the issues of what's going on, there's a lot of them.
Where the town gets there.
You know, the, it's, it's a, uh, it's complicated, it's been dealt with from 2024, 20 years. Uh, I think the last decision was made probably in 2023 with the COVID. And it's going to require a lot of work, uh, and partnering with uh, the city to uh, make a decision on what the decision is that. That is not what's here with, uh, there's not, there's no such decision there. In the meantime, it's not, uh, you know, you can see how unstable it is, but not the great ones to go for a walk when it's um, raining or storming. Um, it's set to vote. So um, it's uh, it's, it's going to be another item that requires a lot of, is a party thing about, not a, that's right. And uh, as you know, the, the, the thing all, the draft this year is, is pretty well. It's, it's going to be something that we require publishing to, to draft. Is there? From Nancy Davis. Can you please share? Oh, sorry, I think it's from the, 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 the.
Some people are getting them.
Okay, so I think this is the last question we have, it's been sent in. Uh, that would be the, the group here. Can you please share in class, you approve the project in our community? Oh, this is the side part. So I, I don't actually know the specific class, I think that we did include side part and we look at rec part. And there's a work, there's a, there's a look at rec part, we can look for inside part at the same time. So Nancy, if you have um, any suggestions or ideas where you have to escape that working group? Then, you know, please send your, your ideas to the office. Uh, and or contact the office or anyone that you think is going to be involved in that. But we're happy to hear uh, any suggestions that anyone has on. Um, Rex Williams, Rex Park, and side part. Uh, the project that we're going to be is currently working on. Okay, so overall, that would be the C. Um, I think what we were going to do with the uh, maybe the community, if you can, if you want to hear anything. And uh. And then we'll, I guess, I guess, things for them to do, if people are open, or they're not, okay. We're not even trying to do this, okay, we're doing like this, we're doing all this. So, we didn't have much behind us. This is, this is.
We're using one of the, 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 so that people can see the light.
Okay, so I'm over it. So you have this, we need to, you have to say your name, and then uh.
My name is Mary Williams, and last year, when I moved, maybe not there, if they were forced to do it today. I found a, uh, workers are coming into the buffer zone, I mean, I'm talking to the car, taking down. And the guy didn't know, he's sure where it is, this person, he's right there about, and he was taking the buffer certain. So I had asked if a buckling sign along the border, so everybody could see it, since the entire area of her button. She said, great idea, we'll do that. Put them on, so I would like to use as well, but that could be done.
Thank you, Dawn, do you want?
I would just like to add, I'd just like to add, I don't need the mic.
If you have anything you want to, you want to do. So.
I have no intention of speaking, it's the way I brought my paper to the board. I have for science, people on that, or one single tree was taken down six years ago. Didn't happen. The SRA, the ASC, developer, city of land, everybody loves that. Uh, anybody who wants to see the history on that, I have a hundred page uh, document that I gave to the board over a year ago. Summarizing everything that I have done to pursue to get that bottom zone protected. Still not at the way it has been. Just wanted to let you know that it's not a new issue, so it's a few years old.
Yeah, so, the, the, the buffer zone in um, the buffer zone in uh, between Premise, the, and uh.
Campus Baguio.
The, of the, of.
St. Andrews Green.
In St. Andrews Green. Uh, back onto Premise, that's been, it's happened, it's been a long, and it's been. The damage that was done is terrible and um, irreversible, that we were removed. Uh, there were uh, there were, there were sequence events that happened up time. It shouldn't happen, and there's so many things to go around. Um, yeah, and, and now, yeah, and now we have, we have. Uh, um, and, you know, with the, the, I know that there's a lot of people in the stand by. But in the, the, the people who have the negative, negative impact, I was extremely angry about. So um, yeah, I don't know, it's, it's, we have not been taking enough on um, some of these, of those services on the neighbor. So yeah, we go, we're absolutely, yeah, that's, I'm, 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 I'm. Steve, I'm going to take off.
Yeah, yeah, I, I can add a little bit, Steve Ains, uh, very real size ASC for you. I can add a little bit of information to the ASC question.
Oh, maybe you can.
Look, to the ASC question, well, the closer you get, the more room you get, the harder it is to affect it. So it's all probably on the exact. Um. Uh, we have a list of at least thirty buffers, open spaces, green belts. And there are at least six other names for areas that are protected in, in one way or another. From various kinds of development. We need to map them, and we need then to create rules. Because most of these areas, although they're named, do not have specific rules. The buffers around Carmody Street do. And as everyone knows, they've, they've been badly violated. Uh, we have been, the ASC has put together this, this list, and had a request in for funding to get a map done. So that we can begin to plot out the areas and place protective signs and that sort of thing around them. Uh, but we're waiting now for basically administrative approval to deploy that.
Uh, Denver? Jennifer Punda, who's that one? Um, uh, my question is, has the dog leash rule been removed from the CCNR? Because when I moved on board, that was removed, and it was not informed by the local municipal, but by us. And when I moved on board, it was quite a distance, where we did find someone for a consent, we let the dog run the leash. And we lost another people's yards, so we didn't have a chance to do it.
Yeah, so we, uh, it's not been moved, something we said, if, if, uh, if, 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 you know, it's part of our, and we. The, uh, enforcement that has been done primarily by walking state. There is also enforcement that's been done by SRA, um, including in the ways of past. Uh, when we received complaints, there have been very uh, severe issues that um, have been uh, have been addressed by SRA. That, you know, have saw, I think there's a lot of, about sending another dog, like um, or not the fire. Yeah, I think we have, you know, we have, there have been various incidents with, you know, varying degrees of uh, um. Extreme consequences to, you know, people just being able to see a dog off, which is a threat. So there's definitely, a, the dog is definitely far beyond me at all times in Sandy Adam or any of the cities.
Any other questions? Yeah. Um. I wanted to ask.
Can you put the mic closer to your phone?
And name and neighborhood as well, please.
Okay, Diane Verrel too. Uh, I wanted to know whether the, at what point, the, our C X O committee, the state committee, were given a project. Um, for overview of putting the play equipment in William Rex Park. And I'd also like to know, would realize the legal and insurance ramifications. Of putting the play equipment in a deeper position that we chose putting it. Uh, I did not realize, I don't feel I have to give a question today. I do have a rationale for what I'm asking, which I will print off and send to the board. Um, and I'd also like to, at the last gen, general meeting. Uh, I asked for its swing. And to be put back in William Rex Park. I've never heard anything about swing, and I'm wondering if that is still something under consideration that the board is thinking about. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Ben. So we, uh, we do uh, remember your question to any community. And we uh, prioritize looking into the uh, equipment. And how these are uh, planned for William Rex Park. Debbie is on this committee, and Debbie has volunteered to be the champion of, of projects with that whole part. Uh, make sure we get community input. Find out what all the options are, what people want, uh, what people don't want, it's not, I don't know what everybody wants. But uh, to, to look at all that, and put a case in consideration, uh, and go back to the board. Uh, we make the things about the boards with a recommendation. So uh, I don't want to be no good, but you, you should introduce each other, the community, to help each other, because that needs to be personal. And it's a um, an activity that, that we're currently prioritizing.
Is uh, play equipment, play equipment, you know, the design, go through the, our technical committee and the state committee prior to the, prior to the project going, like you at home.
Right, so I was on the board in 2023 when I think that happened. The, it went to the maintenance committee. Uh, the maintenance committee seemed to uh, have, you know, an initiative to replace the equipment, the playground equipment. Inside of our articles, very within, pretty best, they, this very, we can say. The maintenance committee pulled that out. I would love, um, the, the decision to, uh, you know, where to place that equipment and uh, what equipment to get. Was all done through maintenance. So we're happy to, we're happy to um, uh, deal with more community input on that.
I did with timeline on when different items concerning that were putting a newsletter. I noticed that the maintenance committee said they were considering um, putting in the, the play equipment. Three months before you had it in your, um, president's report that you were considering the purchase. And I thought that was strange, that they weren't looking at putting in there before they even did over the door.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's definitely, definitely the, 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 they um, went through a committee. And I don't know about the time for my movie, but I think it was a, a, where they lost the chair of their committee. And so there was uh, you know, you know, Paul Ashland, that's why we live on that committee. So it was, you know, it's like a, a nice, well, continuation of the language of the board, the maintenance committee for a period of time. Um, but we're, we're, we're acknowledge that we can get community input, um, if it's still around, and we're writing to the, to our, and we'll uh, and we have a one together to deal with that.
Can we get on the board, that cost was, in the end, costly.
Yeah, yeah, I think if you're working for me, that's all the part of it, is what we spent, what the options are, what they taught, so we, we get all of that. Okay, so.
Sorry, uh, so I'm on the phone, I actually, I'm on the phone, I'm on the floor of, uh, our best holding. But I appreciate the fact that I've talked to the neighbors and, and being proactive with the problem. You're saying this time around, you, you, that you've already put the structure in, right in my face right now. What I see, my biggest concern really is, first of all, the rules were making changes to my problem, those standards. You make a, especially this time around, it's difficult to show that. So, and I was told a lot of people would think, I was very, that yeah, the word of the, the risk with the swings was too much. Okay, so I'm looking at a playground for holders, ten feet from the retaining front. That's, that, that would have been considered upfront, so this time around, if you're doing in the, like, would you take that? Do you start?
So I would love for one of these things to change for a bit, that swing effect, on your own, so.
So you.
Yeah, so that, that is surprising to me. Um, I think we have, uh, maybe one of the, 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 on, the, the, that, that he was made of, 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 and uh.
There's.
Made a decision alone, uh, but I can, I don't think I can do the board meeting, and so, 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 I don't think that topic.
Okay, well, rather than think that topic is deep, it's deep, you know, deep, I'm from Beach, I'm from Villa.
I, I, I'm a recreation person, so therefore my concern would be any, I don't have children. I don't see the liability issues. You know, what he's talking about, the swing, if an accident takes place on recreational, who's responsible? The SRA? It would be like walking on these gravel paths, who's? It would be like walking on these gravel paths. Who's responsible for the liability issue? And I would assume SRA. I mean, we, we just went through the town about a path being built on the beach. So therefore we were talking about liability, who's responsible? So please, Devin, think of this when you start saying, then swings are really a big liability for the little children. Well, that's what you need to, in my opinion, in the recreational specialty.
Okay, I think we should wrap up on the deal set. Is, uh, um, is there anybody else who has a question they want to ask?
Um, I have a question about the, uh, well, according to the pathways that it was discussed with me. How I've been to many, many of these different years and I know in all these, all these pathways have knocked down the maintenance team and when they, they knew of sidewalk, because what I am going to do, these are, they have their, uh, not, they have their, they, they enhance, uh, the operation, you know, but they've gone through a lot of fires. And then you give these things, uh, in my mind, it looks at simply concerned and this, this is, uh, on the lead line here, we found no evacuation, should a, um, fire come on, you know, we believe it would be unfair to put, so I don't know what, uh, what you know, you think it's a sidewalk? And we need that they were completely happy to be there in the development, because there's possibly people that, 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 well.
Can you say your name again?
We didn't get any neighborhood. One, yeah.
Thank you.
It's something that we made the safety committee can, can put onto their agenda, uh, it's, it's sort of a combination of, um.
No, evacuation.
Yeah, evacuation, yeah, 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 exactly, evacuation, yeah, yeah, so I think something, I would, the safety commission, you know, it's on the back of the, okay. This is Bedwood's.
Thank you. Uh, first of all, thanks to our directors, everybody who served the community and all the folks that, that volunteer in our communities. There, there's a really good, in, you know, of community involvement and, and so let them know what is, if you really have on your mind, so that they understand what we're looking for. Here's my question, um, there's been a couple of times, uh, a couple of, like, the Leadership Council of the, the NHOA Leadership Council and a couple of other folks have asked for, if there's any plans to upgrade the Zoom, the video, the audio in the room. Because if you try to participate on Zoom, it's almost impossible to follow the dialogue. So the question is, is there any serious discussion about upgrading that so that we can all participate remotely?
So, yeah, I, I understand. I think I did one remote, you know, we tried to come in and I, I subconsciously, one of the reasons is because I know that the, uh, the audio was terrible. So if I'm sharing the meeting, it's, it's part of the big story here. Um, we, yeah, so we're all aware that the Zoom, uh, audio is the problem and, uh, we've done a number of things. We threw out all the microphone speakers, all the micro speakers, you know, maybe it's the micro speakers. And I think there was a, a small improvement as a result of that, but not great improvement. We've had, you know, everybody giving us advice on what to do. We've had one person tell us that Zoom is too, um, intimidating hard, certainly. There is no, not no soft services to the sound, it was the echo chamber and that continues the problem. That we need to put in some soft panels or something to help sound. Uh, I imagine that the committee said he was an audio engineer and he, he, he could give us some advice as well. So it's something we're, that we're working on, sort of one, one, um, little fix at a time to see if, even if they leave, they can improve the, the audio. You know, I attend a lot of meetings at work routinely, and the bottom line is that if you have everything impending individually, sitting at their computer with a microphone speaker, it's, it's fine. And when you have one big room with nine or 10 people and all five of us speak using one microphone, or two microphones, to, to, uh, people, the, the sound quality is never as good for sitting at their computers speaking directly into the microphone. So there's always going to be a lower level of, of, um, sound in that room, no matter what we do. So, uh, but I'm, I'm certainly aware of this problem and will, will, we, we're trying to implement a system to deal with it. And, uh, thanks to a number of the community for the chance that it's not take a lot of students. Anybody else have questions? Oh.
Hi, I'm Scott Lawson, you're not working. Uh, so, thank you, regarding the board isn't able to provide this episode to you. Is there a plan looking forward to keep the membership in the room in some legally acceptable way that the terms are a payway, so that you have, you don't have a sense of this coming?
So the right for the, is that, um, the only thing that the board can do is direct people to the public domain. So what happens is that when the, when the plane gets off their lawsuit, it's on the Watertown Courthouse records. And you can go to Watertown Courthouse records, Courthouse records online and you can see the entire suit all there. Uh, you can, uh, and then you can get the plane presented there, plane at the city of lane and the golfers can consider playing that there as well. So, uh, what our thing is for is to direct people to that information, that helps they know one's name, to read and, uh, uh, interact. For the belt, we cannot talk about, you know, what our grab news to deal with the plane we got, talk about what's happening, some on taking or partying. We're not allowed to speak to planes without legal control present, we're not allowed to speak to the state without legal counsel present. They've been very restrictive and all things we use to, to preserve the, uh, the position of SRA in the office.
So I understand all of that, that's my question before, definitely, file itself, like I provide every day, I'll give you resources, always have, always have resources. You know, whether I want to know or not, and my question is kind of, there's got to be, to me in my life, there's got to be something that, like, for example, if the trial was developed or, or, you know, or, you know, that we would be able to know something about what's going on, or even when it gets, again, is there a plan, you can, what, what this trial submission is? Or like, what's the, how to, what the outcome of the file, like, tell us, like, what happened and what's going on?
So the question is, is there putting aside a strategy to deal with the lawsuit, is there an update that we can get, a copy of the lawsuit? And, um, I think the, the, I mean, I always get from lawyers and put, for the county, for, you know, the community, uh, this, let people know what we could about the lawsuit, because there's a lot of questions about it. The lawyers that it got before it went out and they proved it. Um, you know, in the event that there is a defendants or, you know, we are removed from the lawsuit, somebody else adds to the lawsuit, we can provide information, I think that we can, if I was, we can provide that information, but first each cut data in order to give the other data, because well, that's the best to be attorney. But it's not fair to say that it's okay, there's really not to, um, provide the update.
So, um, well, that's sort of, that's, and, um, okay, so, I'm sorry, I'm on. Uh, if access money, we see, uh, and similar to the vote, it is how? Could you please explain the board's perspective, what the rights are about vote and what the rights are for overturning or not? And, and then in the CCR, so what they, the vote management, and so, that, that.
So, yeah, the question, did anybody hear the question? Yes, okay, so the question was, there is a, I don't know if I can hear, the question was, there was, well, there's, 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 we're being asked to vote on the additional, then it's, what happened to the vote? Yeah, right, yeah, exactly. So, yeah, the question is what happened to the vote now, is the additional button is, um, holding down? And whether the board can override that vote and spend money in it. So, uh, I don't actually know, ask for the board's vote, whether the board can override it anyway. Um, I'm hoping that the community can see that the, it is the best, that everybody is here to have the assets of the authority insured. Right, it's, it's, uh, it's in everybody's, that, that we have proper insurance in place. So, uh, there may be, and I have a favorite, there may be some, uh, mechanism for emergency or something like that, but, uh, I have, and, you know, we'll send a, we'll send a community page and, uh, I think people will consider that having all the assets of their insurance is is, uh, in everybody's best interest for, you know, parking buildings and for, um, having, you know, the infrastructure that's, uh, properly protected, uh, in, in the ECOA.
Yeah, we have to say, one, uh, it's a possibility, and you said, in this. Maybe there's, why, we can buy the water.
So I would, we could give, third one, the question was, why didn't you and a lawyer figure today to, um, be a president? And we, so we do give board a break and the answer to that is that, um, if the lawyer had come here, the lawyer would have said that they weren't able to provide any, so, uh, when I said that they can't, we can't talk about orders, certainly, this was, okay. But that's why the board is, we can't totally sit here and say, hey, you guys, the board, you guys finding, what are you guys doing? Not about, speaking about law, you know, and what they're with, they're not, they're not the main things, finding the purpose. Um, in terms of going to, to inform on that, if you're speaking, the lawyer would have said, but I'm not going to be able to, they're not, they're, 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 I can get it, but that, that. And I don't, I don't, I mean, I know that much, no.
Thank you. I think Cheryl Smith, I would, in saving. Um, an answer to the lady's question over here, uh, whose liability something goes wrong? Typically, any agreed party looks to anybody that can help them, that they, that they need that to help. And there's no saying that you can, you can sew hands and, but sewing and knitting, I think they're the best. And now concerning this suit, I wonder if the board has given any consideration to having a lawyer represent us? It sounds like this attorney represents the insurance company. I'm kind of concerned because if they're tripping their blades, it seems like they already expect the blades. So I'm wondering if we have somebody that can look over the shoulder of this attorney of the insurance company and just make sure our interests are being protected. And I say that because when you have multiple defendants in lawsuits like this, uh, oftentimes some of them will get together and find them on, on another one. I, I had some heard about very seriously. And, um, so I'm just wondering, you know, consideration has been given to us, I mean, lawyer. And secondly, has any, any consideration been given remedied or error laws that, uh, plenty of us recited in the next.
So, uh, we're going to wrap up this topic, uh, on the lawsuit, I mean, there's, there's many reasons we can provide people, as I said. The lawyer's going to present against our lawyer and they does have, he does represent SRA as well, and he does represent SRA. It's very, very typical that the insurance company provides the lawyers, they, they're paying for the lawyers, you know, incentivized to have the, um, the best outcome for themselves, they don't want to pay other claims. So, you know, we're very confident in the lawyers, but we have a very reputable Seattle law firm that, um, uh, have a lot of experience in their nature of the claim, makes, uh, you know, professional, women's businesses they use, uh, expert businesses that they use, uh, they, they, uh, dealt with, they did the sword. So, you know, we're confident that the, the law firm that we have is very much representing the, the SRA. Um, uh, I can't remember, there's more to your question. And the insurance, uh, insurance is sort of separate, you know, of what happened to the insurance, the insurance, uh, fee, it was, uh, the in both of those, and look for insurance, you know, about this, um, claim on record. So that affects our, our, the people, you know, the insurance who's paying for the lawsuit and who's going to get uh, insurance and benefits, but these people are separate, uh, so they're not. Uh, we want to wrap up on this topic, if we didn't want to, if we move on and cover other topics, speaking of that, I have a budget, but. I think.
He names it, very beside one. You, you've been able to move, you're actually in premium, to move a significant amount of money around in the budget. But we haven't heard what the implications of that are, what will not get done this year because that money was used for a different purpose? And obviously, our insurance premium is not going to go back down to where it was next year. What, by the long term, the effects of having a significant increase in, in the insurance premium? And what things are either not going to get done or get delayed, for example, by our top?
So we, when the third period went out, we could look at the budget and there were, you know, several items in there that when we went through it all, we did not have to, like, pick the additional insurance premium. Uh, well, with a couple of examples, quickly, one is the streetkeeper. Uh, we had, forever made in last year with the assistance of the streetkeeper, was at the end of this, um, useful light. Uh, I think I, I got involved in it being, I was bringing one of those to, to, that they presented that we have a useful light. Uh, Leroy, uh, operates the exact same model streetkeeper in the city and he tells us that the streetkeeper has been fine for another year and a half at least. So the budget, um, I had in Hope Street, the streetkeeping in 2024, uh, on the assumption the streetkeeper wasn't, wasn't, wasn't been working orders. Um, you know, Leroy himself does a lot of work with the streetkeeper, he says that, that he, you know, might, the streetkeeper's paid it all back already. So, um, we are, there's 10,000 dollars in that, but, but there's also money in the budget for, uh, filing and Leroy was being asked in Hope Street, uh, less, 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 for filing, no.
You know.
So, in, you know, so we feel that, uh, there's, uh, some, something that will make, uh, So we feel that, uh, there is, uh, some assumptions that were made, uh, by agents last year. For things to be helped for that are not necessary. And that, you know, it was, it was not necessary we make those decisions. Uh, we, we, we're not enough anything, the people just plus, it's not above. Uh, we, we don't, we're, we're not feeling that there's anything left, we, we, we ask for not, uh, canceling anything with anything. Uh, you know, a lot of. Any other questions? Yeah, so with respect to the, you know, I, I have no idea, you know, about that insurance, all that insurance. The new law insurance of the year from our, our homes and. You know, it goes up because, you know, there's an actual doctor somewhere and sometimes rarely I have to do it now. It, it comes with a buy. Uh, my, uh, you know, I've never had to buy an insurance when I've had a lawsuit. Uh, upon my risk profile, but, um, I'm hoping that when the, if the lawsuit is set up in our favor. Uh, or we're not right for the lawsuit, uh, which is for the whole, that, you know, we did set up in our favor. Or, um, in another favor away from us. Then that the risk profile, that the progress of the DM, you know, it has the right. Uh, should bring, uh, some relief to everyone with the.
The stuff in my, in my dealings with the insurance companies and trying to put all this together at the beginning of the year. Um, I've been doing this, thank the Victoria business for almost twenty-five years. I have a lot of friends and people in the industry, so I get asked a lot of questions. Um. The lawsuit is the biggest loss run as part of the dues and then the amount that's there. Uh, it will be there for a little bit. Uh, I expect the numbers to go down. Uh, I don't expect them to get to the levels they were at for twenty twenty-two or twenty-three. Um, probably for a couple of years, but we are working towards, uh, myself, my team, the maintenance group and everybody else. Making sure we aren't adding any more claims to the, um, to the docket, things like gates or stuff like that. Um, but, um, assurance that now that I understand a little bit more where we stand. Uh, I can spend a little bit more time sooner than last minute, uh, trying to figure out where we're at.
Any other questions?
I would again, and this is really for Aaron. And, and it, it's really, I, I'd like to answer to the question that I submitted. Uh, that says, what degree do we expect, or as residents, should we expect our entry levels to be maintained? Because, you know, you can look at, uh, C level, B level, A level, you know? And I just, I assume that you are the person that drives that decision. And that the entries and the look of our community start to take on the personality of our general manager. So the question becomes, to what degree should we expect our entries in our current style of class meeting to be maintained?
I expect our entry relations, uh, areas like that to be maintained in the ways that they've been in the past. I, I have a lot of, um. Comfort in Leroy's abilities and his thoughts, Mike, uh, one of our other maintenance group, uh, Mike's been around quite a while. Uh, we've been taking pictures of areas we've been going through and I found pictures of entryways, runway in the, in the back years and stuff like that. I like to see consistency. I like to see not so much low maintenance, but something that allows to keep them up to the levels and the standards that. I would expect of as a homeowner myself. Um. But we also have to look at the budgets and the numbers that go along with them. I want to see the consistency throughout the gates and every gate entryway is different, whether size wise, small or large. But I want to see that consistency. I may not have a green thumb, but I don't think it's black thumb and. I can definitely envision what I'd like to see, uh, on top of Leroy and Mike and the. Landscape committee and their inputs and everything as well, what the gates look like, what they want to look like as well. So again, the input from the community is huge, uh, and if you have questions or you have comments or suggestions, we definitely want to hear them. Uh, but, uh, we'll move forward with, uh, making sure it does look. At the level should.
So, you know, I'll, I'll cut a break before Aaron because he just got here in October. So he doesn't have a lot of history in what the gates look like, you know, one year ago, ten years ago, one year ago. But I think it's a little hard for him to probably put it in context of, in the, in the history of, uh, how it's been done. Um, I, I think that we've got a landscape committee, we've got, um. And we've got, uh, a board that goes into the community, looking, uh, nice and certainly. Uh, the project that we did in twenty twenty-three, the, um. The entryways, uh, at the gates. I don't know if it's very in Quover or La Caca, but there was definitely a problem. Um, it was, uh, something on the mindset, we need to be bored to be certain about that and start making the process. Um, and I think that, uh, you know, we're, uh. If we're going to work with Aaron, uh, Aaron, he's been, he's got the old photo, he's got his letters. You can see the terrific things that look like compared to things like now. So, um, and I know from the time that I lived here, that, uh, you know, we, the gates, uh, kind of lost their, their, um. Uh, laughter in the last, uh, I think, I think it's been probably broken.
Does anybody know what this lawsuit is about?
Uh, okay, so we kind of go over the problem of the lawsuit, but I can talk about it if you can, right?
But I hope, I'm not the only one who's, okay?
No, I know, we, we, we work with as a group.
Yeah. Now, in total, to understand what, what's going on, we have to know. Why we, because we all pay our tuition. We have to know what is it about, and at least in my head, I've seen that it's. Those of us who look at it sometime, but they're older. So I could get older, we need a little more help. Maybe whatever this lawsuit is about. We can fix this by maybe having a disability community. And with that, we will find out what is it that now state of Washington. Would like us to do as people who are getting older. And we can go on and on and on with this conversation because it involves all of us. And if you're not going to know someone in your community. Then I don't know, how we can solve this problem and also tackle the problem with lawyers. I, I mean, you see what's going on in our country now. Where each lawyer talks their own little thing and what is insured and what is not. So my field knows that maybe. Aside from finding out what this lawsuit is about. That maybe the board also should rehand itself into disability. I know myself, I didn't walk with a cane when I came here. Unfortunately, I had a fall and now I walk with a cane. So the point I'm bringing out is that when you find out what the law is asking you to do, just disability. With that alone, you should have a bigger people, you always have to buy something. You can't live in what the board was doing five years ago. You have to know, you have to understand what is going on. I mean, I, I almost, I don't understand, this is me talking now, forget what I said before. I don't understand why people have this here. It's silly. You can find that in the next five years, you're going to get. No more emails. And kids, you know, I don't perceive more people here. I don't perceive more kids are going to this neighborhood. But I can see it unless we go out and look through. And what you move now, we walk on out. What do you do when you go to the gate, go when the kids, when, when the kids are playing? We have, like, laws that are now trying to, you know, but where can we get this? That we really have in our minds, people come along. So, okay, thank you.
I would have to stand through the. The back, can I? Okay. Um, Kathy, the staff, Abby, and you. He wanted to know, is the F R A team to come for the Twitter and written or, have we been to say it for their annual conference? The answer is, we have been, we, the staff have been working with the county to get updates and, and press our position that actually. Okay? Any other questions?
Sorry, Ralph, I was in written home. Um, I just wanted to comment, um, about this whole law, the insurance stuff. I think that there's a lot of attention focused on lawsuits, which really doesn't, I mean, it has something to do with that. And the, you know, there's lawsuits in their model. But it does, every time I think to do with us, some real corrupt individuals in the insurance. I did go here from California, went back to COVID, my mom, it was. There were five couples for dinner. I was one of the couples. So four people had their insurance policy canceled. In the last, you know, couple lives. So the one thing you really want to do is to pay your rent and keep your insurance up and down. That's what this is really about. I mean, where the money is coming from and so on and after, and the fact that our rates were raised. Those are unfortunate circumstances, so we don't know how we can pull up because of the plane. But you cannot not have insurance, because then there's no bound to where you want to go, to where it's from.
Thank you. Any other questions? I think some of our, the word of stick around for the law, if there's anything you want to come and give us, um, regularly, we'll be here. Thanks to everybody who spent all the staff for coming on Saturday. There'll be three more.